...to order. Ms. Coleman, roll call please.
Okay, Mrs. Brown. Mr. Craig. Mrs. Devine.
Here.
Mrs. Maya.
Here.
Mrs. McCulsky.
Here.
Mrs. Salzer.
Here.
Mrs. Sherman.
Here.
Mrs. Z. Mr. McMillan.
Here.
Mr. Dilkis is absent. Mr. Chu.
Here. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance. There was no executive session for tonight, so we're going to go straight into presentations and committee of the whole. But first, welcome everyone back from a summer break. I hope everyone had a restful summer vacation. We're getting ready to start school. Before we go into presentations, I think maybe we'll open up committee of the whole and then go from there. So can I get a motion to enter committee of the whole, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Great, so we'll start. First presentation we'll start is a presentation honoring our administrative retirees.
So good evening, everybody, and thank you so much for being here. Welcome back. We wanted to start this meeting by acknowledging decades of dedication and service to the children and families of Collingswood and Oakland by honoring three of our leaders. And so we want to make sure that we read their names into the records. But we also want to acknowledge that their memory will forever be seared into our hearts and minds for the blood, sweat, and tears that they dedicated to these communities. And so to... We have put together a formal acknowledgement of the retirement and the appreciation. The Board of Education and the school district would like to officially and publicly recognize Mr. Windsor Yamamoto for nineteen years of service and dedication to Collingswood Public Schools, 2006 to 2025. We would also like to recognize Dr. Karen Principato, who is in attendance, and we're going to embarrass her publicly, for nineteen years of service and dedication from 1999 to... I'm sorry, twenty-six years. From 1999 to 2025. Dr. P. And finally, our elder statesman. Doctor... Our elder statesman, Mr. Wilsey. For many, many, many years of service, Dr. John "Jack" McMullin. Forty-five years of education, of service to public education, and over three decades of servicing the children and families in our communities. Jack, we appreciate what you have meant to so many. We're going to miss you. And six months after your retirement, I'm going to be tapping you and knocking on your door. Let's give Jack a round of applause, please.
So since we're in committee of the whole, I figured we could take a moment if any board members want to say anything to these outstanding administrators who have had decades of experience and just blood, sweat, and tears into this district. And I'll just start by just thanking Mr. Yamamoto, Dr. Principato, and Dr. McMullin for all the work that they've done and all the care they've put into their work and into the students of Collingswood School District.
I'll go next. You've had so many of my children. Luckily, yes. Luckily, you missed out on the older ones. You probably would have given you a little run for your money. But thank you so much for everything that you've done. I know we consider you like family does. My husband Fabian was so upset when I told him you were retiring. But we love you very much. Thank you for everything.
I wanted to thank Windsor. That's a long time to dedicate to Collingswood. So thank you so much for all of your service and everything you did for Collingswood and for Collingswood students. Dr. Principato, I just wanted to say publicly, like, back in 2006, we were struggling with my oldest, and he did not qualify for special education. And I was at my wit's end. And I came staggering into Garfield Elementary. And she said, "Mom, it's okay. We're going to take care of him. We're going to give him a 504 plan. He's going to be fine." And he's fine. And he's great. And it all started with that. And really, it really started with that. And thank you so much for being so kind to a freaking-out mom. And I'm sure you've done it to a lot of people. And really, I never forgot it. My whole family never forgot it. And Dr. Jack, I'm going to miss you, man. Thank you so much for everything, just being reassuring. Everybody knows it's going to be a loss, but you deserve it. And have a wonderful, wonderful retirement. You deserve it.
Dr. Principato, sorry, awkward. But my first instance in Collingswood Public Schools was when my oldest was going into what was the three-day pre-K at Sharp. He didn't want to go in on the first day. You got him in without his crocs on his feet. We learned a valuable lesson. No more crocs at school. But that was the start. And we were terrified. And it was a great year. And this past year, he was up in middle school with you, Dr. Jack. Helped welcome him in there. And things have progressed. He's kept his shoes on his feet. So I thank you all for that support and all the work that you've done in service to this community for so many years.
I was going to say, I'll go, but I'm not sure I can get this out either. I've been educated by Dr. McMullin back in seventh grade when we had all four of our language courses. And I was lucky enough to have my daughter in middle school this year. So I'm Dr. Principato. I think you are assistant principal of the high school when I was there. So I have had the experience to have you both as educators and leaders. And I appreciate all your service. And thank you. And we will miss you both.
Okay, well, well-deserved retirements. Please enjoy them before Dr. McDowell comes knocking. But thank you again for all of your service. And again, another round of applause, please. Okay, so we're going to move on now to a presentation by Ms. Coleman about the Taxpayer's Guide to Education Spending. And so this presentation is about the comparative guide that the state puts out. I think that this will be important for us as a board to see and also to present to the public, given, of course, that taxes increased considerably this coming year.
Can everybody hear me okay? Kind of hard to follow that up, but going to try. So, and I'll make sure we get this loaded on the website, and the links are active. But every year, Trenton publishes what they call the Taxpayer's Guide to Education Spending. So of the 600-plus school districts, they rank us on about eighteen to nineteen indicators, including some ratios, cost per pupil, cost of administrative salaries, average class size. So of the 600, then they further break it down into peer groups. So there's some school districts that are only elementary, some that go through eighth grade, and then some like Collingswood that go through pre-K through 12. So what I did is I tweaked out all the information pertaining to Collingswood and from our peer group. So in our peer group, we're in a pre-K to 12 peer group with enrollments of up to 3,500 children. So that's kind of who we're comparing ourselves to. And I apologize if this is hard to see, believe me. But so the first set of numbers, I always do three years because I like to have the history of three years. But if you look at the most recent year, 2324, so what's going to happen is in this coming year, they're going to get rid of 2122, and then they're going to publish 2425 and then the 2526 budget. So the last two columns will be different. But this is the total budgetary cost per pupil. And it's ranked of our seventy-four peer groups. So there's seventy-four districts of like size of Collingswood in the state of New Jersey. And the costs are ranked low to high, just so you kind of know. You don't want to be the worst. You don't want to be the highest. So I kind of pulled a ranking. So in 2324, we were ranked number ten out of seventy-four in the total budgetary cost per pupil. And then the indicator number two is our total classroom instruction. So what that includes is teacher salary and benefits and supplies and technology. So things that are directly in the classroom. It doesn't include library or anything like that, child study team. That's in a different indicator. But just those items that are directly delivered within the classroom setting itself were ranked number twelve out of seventy-four. Here we go. Look at that. Technology. And the reason I give this to the board members in the community is, I know we're getting... It's kind of early, but the audits have been completed and we're getting ready, believe it or not. I'm going to start playing around with the budget again. So I like to... When we throw a lot of things out at the community, like this is how much it costs per pupil, and this is how much admin is. I'm giving you the information and the source from where it comes from, but I think it's a good marker of where we stand as a school district. Indicator number six is our total support services, right over here. Oh, I'm going backwards. Look at me. Here we go. All right. About middle of the road. And then indicator seven is support services, salary, and benefits. So support services are those things that we provide to the children that are not directly instruction. So child study team, health services, media, technology services, anything that we provide our children. And we do a lot. And in this case, we do a lot of mental health services. So those things that deal with the physical and emotional well-being of the children and the extra services we provide, that's what's considered support services. So again, middle of the road, not the highest. Admin, this always gets a lot of... People look at it a lot. So indicator eight is our total administrative cost. We're ranked number eight. Again, this data is already a year and a half old. But Trenton moves a little slowly with publishing data. For some reason, they also look at our legal services specifically. I actually have to sign every year when the auditors come out. I have to certify the amount of money we're spending on legal and that I didn't move money, that I... Not allocating things to admin and/or legal that should be allocated elsewhere. The state looks very closely, for some reason, at what districts spend on legal expenditures. I have no idea why. We're about number fourteen. And then indicator number nine is the salary and benefits of our administrators. That includes all administrators. So includes Dr. McDowell, myself, everybody in the board office, our principals and their assistants. And again, we're ranked pretty low. Total operations and maintenance of plant. This is a good one because we have a maintenance reserve. We have capital reserve. And believe it or not, when John and I start looking to do the budget, we always have a list of capital projects that we want to get done in the district. But there's a minimum of maintenance and capital we have to do on our school buildings every single year to be compliant, which is why in the fall, you'll see me come before the board, probably in the month of October, and I'll put before them the comprehensive maintenance plan. It's all governed, it's a law of a rolling average. There's a certain amount I have to put back into the buildings every year. But there are schools... Some school districts have put a lot more in. And there are some school districts that put a lot more capital into their districts. So this is basically what these indicators are. The first one is just total operations of plant. That's all the costs of all of our building administration costs. Ranked number nine. Indicator eleven, that's just the salary and benefits. We're sort of... We're just about at the halfway mark, ranked with our other peers. We're kind of high. But I always remind the county offices that that does come up every fall when we have our mid-year budget review. They're like, you know, we're not the highest, but we're not in the lowest third. And I always remind people, we have five very small elementary schools, and we require custodians to be on site when our kids are in the building. So we probably do have more custodians than maybe some of our neighbors, but that's due to the size and age of our buildings. This is the one that I'm keeping an eye on the most. And those of us, luckily, we're not in the state health benefits plan, but neighboring districts that are in the state health benefits plan, people are going to be looking at this number. This is the total cost of employee benefits. Right now, we're about 31%. Not crazy, but just three years ago, we were at 29. Next year and the year after, you're going to be looking at 32, 33, 34%. You can mark my words because the cost of prescriptions are out of control in the state of New Jersey. We had a 20% hit in the cost of our insurance plan this year. You've probably heard me say this a million times, but it's the cost of the weight-loss drugs. And from what I'm hearing from all the state meetings I'm going to, probably the patent is not expiring anytime soon on these weight-loss drugs. So we're going to probably be looking at large increases in prescription costs for the indefinite future. So you're going to hear this again throughout the budget because I'm already looking at these costs going into my next budget year.
Quick question about that piece, which is, that's 30% of the total salary cost? Correct, not like the total budget, but the...
That's the percent of salary.
Okay.
Yep. And that's it for me. You're up, Roger. Any questions? I'm sorry, from board members. I just want you guys... I shared this with the finance committee, and I did the same with the Oakland board last week because I think it's good as board members, you guys kind of have an idea. Because people always talk about the cost of education and taxes increasing. And I want people to know what the numbers are.
So yeah, we went over this in Oakland last week, and the ranking was a little confusing for us. And I think we asked in our meeting, but lower is better?
Lower is better.
Okay.
Yes. It's ranked low to high. Yeah.
So I'm actually going to do my presentation after Kate goes over... Dr. Salzer goes over our board goals piece.
Okay.
But before then, do we have any questions about the taxpayer's guide to education spending?
So I just want to know, is this going to be shared borough-wide at some point?
We can put it on the website. I mean, it is available if somebody wants. Those links are live, and anybody can go on the Department of Ed's website because it is public information. This is where the papers, when you see on the front page of the Courier-Post, like Camden City spends $30,000 per pupil. This is where they get that information from.
Okay, just with the tax increase for the community, I mean, we're trying to partner with the borough, and this would probably be a really great thing to somehow see how it can send out borough-wide. So it's the community understands where the money is going.
Yeah, this is why I did this. I figured, let me, you know, it's good to know.
I just want to make sure I'm clear. Lower is better.
Correct.
If there's a ranking of one to seventy-four, help me extrapolate that. So there sometimes we're ranked nine, sometimes we're eight, sometimes we're thirty-five.
Correct.
So is that median if you're thirty-five? Right, so I'm just trying to understand that.
Yes, you're in the middle of the road. Yeah, you don't want to be the highest because when you're looking at other peer groups... I looked at peer groups, and then we look at state averages. So what this did is it looked at the state average. So within our peer group, the state average, we're like middle of the road. So we're not the highest spender, cost per pupil in any category. We're about middle of the road in most of them. And some were very low.
And the comparative group is, I believe, pre-K through 12, so comprehensive districts with enrollment of, I think, 1,800 to 3,500. Right, so it doesn't include really small districts. So we're what, 23, 24?
Yeah, we're about 2,200 and change.
Something like there. And so, yeah, so with seventy-four districts, what, thirty-seven would be the median?
Yeah, I think I would offer, as more of this is pushed out, giving some context around that so people know how to digest these numbers would help because I was trying to remember. And each time we looked at one, so just offer that. Thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, it's on the tippy-top of this.
Right at the top of each page was that info.
I'm glad we're lower, but I think... Correct me if I'm wrong. We should expect to be lower because we're a smaller, somewhat smaller district.
Correct. And this data is old. So like going forward, I expect probably 25, 26, and 26, 27. This was before we settled the teachers' contract. So we're looking at old budgetary information, right? So now everything's going to be like, it's going to be righted.
Right.
Because we went a year, so it was very low.
And the piece about it being lower because we're a smaller district, that's not precisely it because the rankings are done by the per-pupil cost. So it's the average cost, so it's the cost divided by the number of pupils we have, right? So that...
And we're also low because geographically. I mean, the costs of North Jersey, for some reason, are astronomical compared to what they are down here.
But it's not because, like, you know, of course, if you're a district with a thousand pupils versus a district with 3,000 pupils, you'd expect a district with 3,000 pupils to have a bigger budget, right? And bigger costs. But that's not what... They're not comparing the absolute cost. They're comparing the unit rate, right? The cost per pupil. The interesting piece there, too, is that I believe theoretically, if you have bigger enrollment, you would expect to have a lower per-pupil cost in things like administrative costs, right? Because you would be able to spread administrative costs across more students rather than small. And that's why a lot of smaller districts, for example, like Oakland, contract out their state superintendent and business administrator services because it is way too costly for a district of that size to have their own. And so I think that's one of the important things for us to understand there with these rankings. The other thing I would mention there, too, is considering that we're low in many areas, I think, Ms. Coleman, what you say about how we don't want to be the lowest, but we don't want to be the highest, I think is really important because, you know, I don't know that it serves us to be the most cut-rate district in any area, right? But at the same time, I think, seeing that we are low in so many areas, I think goes back to the point which you've made multiple times, which is that, you know, our per-pupil costs are low compared to our comparison districts. And what that says is that we're trying to do a lot, right, with less, right? So we're trying to stretch our resources as much as possible. It's not as if we have this massive amount of money per pupil that we're spending and that we could use more efficiently. We're clearly trying to do as much as we can with as much as we have. And I think that's something for us to keep on striving towards. Of course, I think everyone here on the board would agree with that. Any other questions or comments from board members here? So then, thank you, Ms. Coleman. I was going to pass it to Dr. Salzer to talk about our board retreat and about the goals that we discussed during the board retreat.
Good evening, everyone. So on August 4th, a good number of us, not every single one of us, but a lot of us, met for a few hours to do some collaborative goal-setting for the 25, 26 academic year. And these are goals that sort of we use as a board to set our priorities for the school year. They help us link to accountability, right? What are we really looking for over the course of the school year in terms of meeting of goals? And of course, we want them to align with the district's priorities, right? What the district is working toward, we would like to align our goals to. So the three that we agreed on over a couple of hours of work together, and these may sort of shift a little bit in terms of wording, but the general sense is the first is that all students will have access to rigorous academic pathways that are clearly articulated internally and communicated externally to students and families. The second is that we will seek, in the district, to develop, implement, and standardize periodic student, staff, and family culture and climate benchmarks, really to get a sense of how people are feeling across the district and across different groups in the district. And lastly, we will look to see developed a consolidated proactive and responsive communication protocol, both in district and beyond, meaning borough-wide, community-wide, that ensures accessible and inclusive understandings of message, right? So for example, if we are sending out communication about the budget or about facilities or about academics, we are doing our best to communicate those things clearly and to multiple audiences. So those are the three goals that we came up with as a group. And hopefully, we will see and check in with them throughout the school year.
So I know that Dr. Salzer sent those, like the full wording of those goals to all the board members. So I think if y'all have any more comments about those and maybe you want to adjust some of the language, please let her know. And then hopefully, we can maybe put this out so that everyone can see the formalized goals while once that's clarified. And I just want to thank everyone for their work on those goals and also Ms. Coleman and Dr. McDowell for helping during that retreat. Okay. So then, I want to do one more presentation during committee of the whole. And this is, I think, a cost of celebration, which is that we today, on our agenda, have up for approval the long-awaited new contract for the CEA. So I was going to present the pieces of that, the contract, the terms that we've come to agreement with, and then, yeah, so that the whole board can be formed and let the community know basically what we've been working on with the CEA for a while. Okay, so, let's see. Okay, so for this presentation, I'm going to go over the quick highlights, and then we'll go into detail. You know, one of the things that I thought about was whether or not, you know, how much detail to go into, given that a lot of this stuff is really technical. But I figure since this has been, I think, a really important part of town and district discussion for a while now, I think it's important for us to understand the details of the contract as it stands now. So just quick highlights. So the CEA contract, it covers three years, which is last school year, which I know is confusing because we're passing it today, this current school year, and the next school year. So it's a three-year contract. I'll go over a little bit more about what it means to cover last year in a bit. It includes all what's called certificated staff, which is teachers, psychologists, guidance counselors, basically folks who need a type of certificate in order to be employed, but not supervisors, for example. And then administrative assistants and instructional assistants. Now, I put a little asterisk there next to instructional assistants because not all of our instructional assistants are part of the CEA. Some of them are hired through the ESS, I believe, Educational Services Group. And so they are not part of the CEA. So a few things. One, historically large raises for CEA staff. So this is something I think all of us here are really happy about. So average 3.89% per year over the three years of the contract. We have large raises for administrative assistants. So that's, you know, in the first year, 4.45%, second year, 5.61%, last year, 4.97%. You know, this is something that I think was brought up multiple times by members of the public and by staff. And I think we're... I know I'm personally quite pleased to be able to have these large raises here. And then starting salaries for teachers among the highest in the area. So I'll talk about this a little bit more in a minute. Also, there's a shorter step guides for all CEA staff. I know that step guides is kind of a term of art. So I'll explain what that means in a second. Back-to-school night and graduation are added to the contract as required activities. And again, I'll talk a little bit more about this in a minute. So those are the just contract highlights just overall. So the details. First off, there's a bit of just technical language changes in the contract. And so things, for example, like changing lunchtime to lunchroom, just some specific wording pieces kind of to update the contract. And so these are just technical language changes that you might expect through, you know, most contract renegotiations. There's also a creation of a joint elementary, CEA, and admin committee on school schedule, mirroring the existing joint secondary committee. So currently, in the current contract, there's a language for basically a joint committee between secondary teachers. So that's, you know, middle school and high school and administrators to talk about the school day schedule. And so one of the pieces that we agreed to was adding similar language.
And so, uh, one of the pieces that, um, we agreed to was adding similar language, uh, for the elementary, um, uh, school day schedule as well. That's for elementary CEA members and administrators come together, uh, to form a joint committee on, on school schedule. Um, we also, uh, agreed to reimbursement for the cost of licensure for teachers hired through the provisional license or emergency certification process. Um, and so we know that a- at times, uh, we may be hiring teachers who have either provisional license or, or have an emergency certification, uh, certification, and, and they want to go and, and get their full licensure, right? Their standard certificate. And so, uh, we are, uh, agreeing to reimburse the costs for those, those teachers to basically become, uh, uh, full teachers in that sense. Um, increase in pay rate for teachers who teach summer programs. Uh, and you know, I, I think it's important to make sure that we keep updating that pay rate to make sure that we're, we're keeping up with, um, uh, uh, pay a- as the contract ages. Uh, there's five-hundred-dollar bonus per semester for teachers who are mentoring, uh, a student teacher. I think that's important. My understanding is that, you know, student teachers are one of the ways in which, uh, we can get a pipeline to new teachers within, uh, the district. And so it's, it's, you know, I think this behooves us to be able to, uh, at least, you know, have a stipend, a, a bonus for, for teachers who are willing to, to mentor, uh, new student teachers. A five-hundred-dollar bonus for CEA members who refer candidates, uh, who, who are hired as, as part of CEA positions. Again, you know, trying to make sure that we continue to have a, a pipeline of, of candidates there. Um, and then we also have raises for extracurricular stipends. So in this school year, so twenty-five, twenty-six, we're adding, uh, ten-thousand dollars collectively, uh, to, uh, how much, uh, the extracurricular stipends we're, we're paying out to CEA members. And then next year, an additional, uh, fifteen-thousand dollars, uh, collectively. So that's increasing basically, um, those after-school activities, uh, um, like, uh, sports teams or, uh, the play, um, you know, musicals, things like that. This is, this is where that money is going, and I'll talk a little bit more about collectively, uh, the term collectively in, in a second. So CEA salary increases, this is, I think, one of the, the biggest pieces. So just to kind of set the stage for folks who, who aren't, uh, used to this. So raises for unions are negotiated collectively, and what that means is we're not talking about individual people in individual raises, right? The whole point of, of, um, a union is to make sure you're negotiating collectively. Um, and so what we do is basically generally, the, the raise percentage is a, an average raise across the union. So we say, okay, this is how much union salaries are, we're going to negotiate overall. On average, this is the percentage amount that the, the staff will get. Now, what this does mean though is, you know, depending on how the money is distributed, some members receive a higher percentage or a lower percentage depending on their position and length of service. But overall, when we talk about salary increases with unions, we talk about the, the average percentage, um, across, uh, the entire union. So looking at what we have in this contract, so for twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, the raise was three-point-nine percent. Twen- this current year, three-point-nine percent, next year, three-point-eight percent, with an addition of, uh, a, uh, ten-thousand dollars for this year specifically earmarked towards administrative assistants, and other five-thousand dollars for next year specifically earmarked for administrative assistants. All right. And so wh- what this is again is, is an average over the entire group. Now, of course, the, the ten-thousand, five-thousand are specifically earmarked for, uh, raises for administrative assistants. Um, and, and so this is when I talk about collectively, right? That's what I mean is, is again, when we look back at the extracurricular stipends, that's the, the total amount. When you look at all the extracurricular stipends, you know, that's, uh, let me see. That's, you know, that's how much we've increased, uh, uh, those amounts. Now, something that's important to note is, well, you know, we're passing this contract, you know, this school year. What do you mean it, it's, it covers last school year? Well, um, because it took a while for us to get the contract agreed upon, uh, what happens now is that, uh, CEA staff will receive their twenty-two, four, twenty-two-five raises retroactively, right? So it's, it's not like, uh, we ignore, you know, the last school year. Basically, once we as a board pass, uh, um, the contract, then my understanding is that the business office has teed up ready, um, the retroactive pay, and that should go out, uh, very shortly to, uh, CEA staff so that basically the raise that they should have gone over the school year from last year, they will, they will get, um, uh, I believe, basically end of August. All right, I believe that's the last point here, yes. So one thing I mentioned was this historically large raises. Um, you know, one of the things that, this, this was something that I, uh, the graph I made, um, towards the end of last year. And one of the things that I think we should as a board, um, uh, be excited about is that we are able to, uh, uh, give, um, a raise I think is higher than what we've done in, in the last decade worth of contracts. And so what you see here is the red line is the Camden County average raise. Um, now, just a note, this line, piece right here, uh, probably has adjusted since I made, um, this graph, uh, end of last school year. But basically, this is basically the average raise over, uh, all of Camden County in each of those years. The blue line is, uh, the raises that we had within our, uh, contract, uh, the CEA contract, for each of those years. And so what we'll see here is that for, uh, this new contract, for all three years, we are, we are well above the, the county average. Um, whereas before, it seems basically we, we started the county average and then kind of held it flat, and so as the county average raised, um, uh, you know, we dipped a little bit below the county average for those years. Um, step guide length. So this is a term of art that I was talking about previously. So salaries for CEA members are determined by a defined step guide, and this is actually linked inside the, uh, agenda if, if you want to go, uh, look at it. So generally, a, a step guide is, is, I describe it as a table that lists how much someone makes depending on their position and a, and also upon their years of service or, or step. And so here's just the example, I know it's a little small, but the example from the, the new step guide for year two, so this is this year. And this is for certificated staff, so again, you know, teachers, uh, psychologists, you know, guidance counselors. And just to, because I know this is kind of potentially a confusing topic. So basically what this says is if you're a teacher with just a bachelor's degree, and you're on steps one-dash-three in this year, you will make this much money. If you're on step four, you'll make this much money, step five, you'll make this much money, et cetera. This has been kind of confusing for us as a district in the past because we've had steps and years, and steps don't always correspond with years. Sometimes, you know, uh, a, a step might span multiple years. And so what we've done here, even though it says, says step one through three, uh, what we've agreed to here basically is that, uh, basically, you know, this is a single step, then the next is a single step. So if you're in your first year of service, you'll get this. Next year, you'll get, you'll go to step four, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. All right. And so that's how you kind of read it. So if I have a master's degree, you know, uh, and I'm starting at the very beginning, no experience, then, you know, that's what I would get. And that's how you read, uh, a step guide. So this is important because a step guide kind of determines how long it takes to get the top of the step guide. Top of the guide is something that people will say, and that, that means kind of maxing out, um, uh, your salary for, for that position. And so the, uh, CEA contract includes step guides for certificated staff, so that's teachers, again, psychologists, guidance counselors, you know, administrative assistants and instructional assistants. Um, and all three step guides were shortened during this contract. So fewer years to reach the top step for, for all three groups. Um, you know, so for certificated staff, uh, you know, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, at the end of the prior contract, it was twenty years. So what that means is if you started as a brand-new teacher, no experience in the district, it would take you twenty years of continuous service to reach the top of, top of the guide, the, the, the highest salary for that, uh, position. Um, what we negotiated and what we agreed to was for last year, we'd keep it twenty years. But starting this year and next year, we would, uh, go to eighteen years. So now we've, we've basically cut off two years, so it takes, uh, two few years to reach the top of the guide. And just for those of you who are interested, that's why you'll, you'll see kind of the one through three, you know, step compression. That, that's why it's weirdly named that way, but that's how we cut off two because even though the step will be step twenty-plus, it really takes eighteen years to get there. Um, for administrative assistants, again, prior contract, fifteen steps. Uh, this contract for, for all years, uh, nine steps. Um, instructional assistants, fifteen steps, nine steps. All right, so, so, uh, shortened, uh, guide, step, steps for, for, um, all three kind of subgroups within the CEA contract. Um, high starting salaries for teachers too. So one of the goals that, that I think the CEA expressed, uh, during board meetings, uh, and, and to us, and one that I, I would believe the board, we share as well, is that we want to be able to attract, um, new teachers to the district through competitive salaries, right? And one of, I think, the concerns was the lower starting salaries for, for teachers. And, and while I don't think that, um, we could say that every piece of the, the salary guide is, uh, exactly where everyone wants it, one thing that we can, I think, highlight and be proud of is that we do have high starting salaries now for teachers with this contract. So, you know, our new co- uh, contract increases are starting salaries. Um, and looking at so many surrounding districts, we are actually quite high now, um, and maybe on the top end. And I think that's gonna help position the district well, uh, in terms of attracting, you know, new, um, uh, teachers, you know, coming right out of school. So looking here, here's an example. So Collingswood is, is the very first row up here, and I've also highlighted in green, uh, the highest of that column. And I've put some districts here that are, are, you know, around and, and what I think folks often, uh, talk about in comparison with Collingswood. Little note, I have little dash marks here because I put Haddon Heights here even though I put dash across because essentially, uh, these contracts for these school districts for those years aren't yet publicly posted. I think Haddon Heights, uh, they're probably still figuring out their, their, um, their, uh, step guide right now because they just got the MOA in place. Cherry Hill, I think, uh, they agreed back in March or April, but I couldn't find it online, uh, so there it is. So basically what we can kind of see here is, you know, at the very first year, where this is kind of, I think, representative of where we've been kind of in the past, sort of, not the very bottom, but, but, you know, not the top, um, in terms of, of our starting salaries. And as we go and, and, uh, through, you know, negotiations with the CEA and, and collaboration there, we were able to raise that starting salary, uh, a good amount. Um, and so by twenty-two, twenty-six, twenty-seven, at least in this group of, of, of districts and, and with the data I was able to find, we would be among the highest in our area in terms of starting salaries for new teachers. And, and that, I think, uh, should hopefully position the district well to recruit again, uh, new teachers. Um, so there are also some newly codified duties. One of the things that we heard, um, from, uh, some, I think, parents and families was, was how important back-to-school night is, especially when it comes to, you know, if your student was in the fifth grade and now is going to middle school, right? Or middle school and not going to high school. There's a different campus, different responsibilities, different, you know, maybe, you know, subculture of what's going on there within the district. And back-to-school night is really helpful for, uh, what we heard is really helpful for parents to understand, hey, wh- what is my student experiencing? What, you know, uh, how do I support them, et cetera? And so one of the, uh, things that we agreed to was that back-to-school night is now a required duty for all teachers as part of the CEA contract. So previously, uh, that was not, uh, within the contract. Now it is, uh, part of the contract, is a required duty, um, uh, and so we can expect to have that, uh, each, each year. And, and hopefully that helps meet the needs of, of parents who, uh, you know, are, especially when they're switching basically schools. Uh, there are also two other newly codified duties. One is that middle school teachers will be required to attend middle school promotion ceremony, and also that high school teachers are required to attend the high school graduation ceremony. And again, one of the things that we heard there was that, uh, these were really important cultural pieces to the, uh, experience of, um, students and families, uh, and of, of really building and maintaining and celebrating the culture within the school district. And so, uh, one of these, so right here, just saying that expectation clear that, that those, uh, celebratory moments would, would be, uh, should be, you know, had by the entire school, I think it is really important. And those are two newly codified duties as well inside the contract. So finally, um, you know, next steps. So the CEA contract is up for approval from the full board tonight, so that's agenda item fifteen-point-oh-three. Um, and in fact, what, uh, I'm likely to do is, because of just a few technical pieces, it's better if we actually do agenda section fifteen earlier. So after our first couple of comments, I'm going to actually move that agenda section up so we can get that, uh, approval, um, uh, done, uh, early. And, um, yeah, so, you know, I know this is the first time I've presented to the full board about all the nitty-gritty details, even though, you know, I've sent, I think, the MOA and so forth to folks. Um, are there any questions from, from board members about the, the contract details or anything before we, I guess, eventually go on to, to put up a vote?
Um, thank you for your presentation, Roger. Will, um, retirees be eligible for retro pay?
Yeah, so that was one of the, uh, pieces that, that we talked through with the CEA. Um, if you served and, uh, during, uh, so if you were a, uh, member during twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five, last year, uh, and you retired, you would get retro pay for, um, your service, yes.
And you said, um, that was gonna be, uh, paid out by the end of August, you said?
Yeah.
In like one lump sum?
Yeah, so, yes. So my understanding, if, I don't want to speak, but if I'm correct, basically, the business office has those, that retro paid calculated, and the idea is that it would, w- once we approve it, then they can, uh, push it out. And that should, I believe, uh, go out Friday as one lump sum, is that correct? Yeah, Friday as one lump sum to each, uh, of the CEA members.
And I, and one more, the, uh, the ten-thousand and the five-thousand for the administrative assistants for twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-six, twenty-seven years, that just goes on to their existing salary they have?
The, so it, remember, that's a collective amount, so it, I guess, basically gets dispersed across, um, uh, their guides. And so one of the pieces, if you remember from the highlights, let me back up, back up, back up, back up. Here we go, this piece right here. So if you notice, you know, the average percentage is around three-point-nine percent per year. But if you look at, uh, uh, the, just pulling out the administrative assistants by themselves, this is the percentage there, and that's part of what helped boost up, um, uh, their raises, which is again, was an important piece because, um, uh, you know, I think we heard rightfully how the administrative assistants, uh, were lower-paid considerably compared to, uh, uh, neighboring districts.
Yeah, yeah, and I think that's, that's great that, that we focused on that and gave some, some effort. But the ten K is collectively across the ent- entire district?
Uh, in, across the entire, uh, group of administrative assistants, yes.
Got it, okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Can you post this?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, just because it's, it's nice and it's bulletproof.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, like, if, if people have questions, this is a really nice thing to reference.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, yeah. And that was, my intention was to get this out to, um, uh, Dr. McDowell and, uh, Ms. Coleman so that it can be posted, yeah, absolutely. Any other questions?
Not a question, but I just wanted to say I really appreciate, and I think, um, other teachers well, the, the new start, the higher starting salary in order to attract additional teachers. Um, there's fewer and fewer, you know, graduates, especially at the secondary level, from gradu- um, from education programs. Um, and so states like New Jersey are gonna be gobbling them up, like, the schools in, in this state are gonna be gobbling them up as quick as possible. So having a really attractive, higher starting salaries, I think, gonna hopefully make a big difference.
Um, I just want to say, uh, thank you, Roger, for this presentation. Um, like Maggie said, nice and, and laid out, and I'm sure the community will appreciate it too. And just want to weigh in and say, you know, we know that this was not an easy process, but to see so many wins for, for the, for the teachers in the district, I think, um, is a really great way to sort of end this process and to start the school year fresh with it. Um, it is great to see, and I think our community will be really appreciative.
Okay, great. Um, I think that, that's it for me, so.
Okay, um, with that, can I get a motion to exit committee of hold?
So moved.
And a second? Um, all those in favor? Okay. So now we'll, uh, moving to section five, future dates and miscellaneous information. So, uh, many future dates coming up, uh, including, you know, I think kindergarten meeting greets and, you know, reminder Labor Day, school, and then school opens, uh, on September fourth. One thing that is not in here yet is the, uh, board roundtable for September, so we're, we're still getting dates for that, and we will, uh, announce that hopefully, you know, with a full schedule of, um, of dates, yeah, yeah.
Um, they will ideally be back in the library community room again. They will ideally be back in the library community room again this year. We're just waiting on confirmation from the folks over at the library. But as always, they are about two weeks, the Thursday, about two weeks before our board meetings. And those were were great last year, a good opportunity to just have another access point to to board members. And we look forward to those again.
Okay, thank you. And so then moving on to section six, routine business, approval of minutes. So a motion to approve the minutes of the June 23, 2025 regular board meeting, the June 2025, sorry, June 25, 2025 special board meeting, and the August 4 IS 2025 board retreat.
So moved.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is this all, yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving on to section seven, student reports. So we will, we don't have any student reports at the moment because I think they're, they are still selecting student board members. So we'll move on to section eight, the superintendent's report.
So good evening again. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. Section 8.01 is the enrollment report. June of 2024 enrollment was 2249. June of 2025 is 2201. 8.02 and 8.03 are the school safety drill reports, as well as the suspension reports. Just have a few general statements. We will be sending out a public meeting highlight, which talks about back to school. It also talks about information that is covered in this evening's board meeting. And then just general notes pointing families to their child's school and all of the upcoming dates as we get prepared to welcome students back next week. As I had to share with my wife, the first day of school is Thursday. Our lovely teachers and staff will be joining us on Tuesday, September 2, where we will have a large convocation of all faculty and staff here in this building in the middle school auditorium, where we will be reflecting and celebrating the 24, 25 school year. We will be identifying the district priorities for the 25, 26 school year. And there will be a lot to celebrate. We'd also like to note and thank our new staff academy coordinators for an amazing job. They welcomed 34 new staff this year. In our new staff academy, these are all talented, energized, and dedicated new members of our team. We'd also like to acknowledge our school and district leaders. They participated in two leadership retreats this summer, one in June reflecting on the 24, 25 school year, and one last week, really identifying goals, objectives, and estimated outcomes for the 25, 26 school year. And our school leaders did a phenomenal job of, throughout the entire summer, of screening and interviewing and selecting really strong candidates that are joining our team. We'd also like to publicly acknowledge Mr. John Longo and our buildings and grounds crew for their phenomenal work in all of their summer projects this year. Not only did they get all of the schools clean and ready to receive students and staff next week, they also had major construction projects that were going on concurrently. And so you will also hear more about that when we send out a public announcement with photographs of their collective work. And so we would also like to gently remind our community that we have a wonderful leader in the back of our space, Ms. Niesner, and the Panther Pantry. And so the Panther Pantry is a student and staff-led initiative that helps to provide nourishment and personal care products to needy families in Collingswood, Oakland, and Woodland. And so we're extremely proud, and you'll hear more about that throughout the course of the year. And they will be a permanent fixture in all of our our public meetings as a gentle reminder of how fortunate we are, and that when we come together, we can also take care of those who are less fortunate. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. McDowell. With that, we'll move to section nine, public comment. So this is the first public comment section. The purpose of this public comment section is to discuss items listed on the agenda. Additional more general comments may be made later in the meeting during the second public comment section. So the public should be reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. The intent of public comment is to give the committee opportunity to provide feedback to the board. We will be actively listening and taking notes so that we can take all that is being said into consideration. And we will also take note of any questions, and if appropriate, do our best to address them at the end of public comments. Members of the public are welcome to speak and expect to do so with the utmost sensitivity for everyone in attendance. And in fairness, for all who wish to speak, there's a strict remit time limit per person during public comment, and Ms. Coleman will assist me by keeping time. Please remember to state your name and address for the record. The floor is open.
I throw my back down. I'm getting there. Okay, I just had a question about the enrollment. Oh, Stacy DeMarco, 524 Jessamine. I have two student, two children at Sharp. I had a question about the enrollment. It looks like it has gone down in a year of 48 students. I just wanted to know where those students are going, the the 48? Because Collingswood seems to be like a booming town and people are moving here. So why are there less students at our schools? You would think there would be more, especially because we're adding preschool classrooms. So that's just a concern that I noted. That's it. And I will hobble back to my chair.
Okay, it does not seem as if there are any more public comments. You know, I do want to note the the question from Ms. DeMarco. And I think we'll, that's something that we can probably get back to to the folks about. All right. So with that, we're going to move on to section 10, the business. Oh, yeah, sorry. Good point. Let's, so let's actually skip ahead and do section 15. I think I can just remove that. Yeah. So we're just going to move, yeah. So we're just going to move section 15 first. Thanks. Thank you, Ms. Coleman, for that reminder. So section 15 is the miscellaneous section. And so there are three items in the miscellaneous section. So 15.01 is the HEB report from the previous month, which is actually June, not July. And then 15.02 are some new job descriptions. And then 15.03 is the CA contract agreement, which I just presented on. So at this moment, I am seeking approval for items 15.01 through 15.03. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
Questions or comments from board members?
I have a question about the MTSS coordinator. So these individuals will be, they'll be doing the one-on-one in addition to, because that's the way I read it, because at first I wasn't sure if they were just developing the program. But then it said they will be providing instruction to students. Could you clarify, please?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your question. Continuing to grow and evolve our secondary MTSS program is one of our top priorities at our sixth through 12th grade level. Thus, the posting that you see and the job description here for your approval tonight. There is a main priority on building the system and serving kids if needed. And so dual roles, dual hats if needed, but a huge focus on using the tools and the resources that you have approved in prior meetings, such as our universal screener for MAP, the branching mines MTSS platform that you approved last spring, and really bringing that fully to life going forward this coming year.
So in the job description for the special assistant, part of that was MTSS coordinator in there, and then there's a separate description for another MTSS coordinator. Are they both going to be doing similar things like you just said, Mer?
The special assistant supervises the coordinators. And so the MTSS coordinator is a re-titled position. And so we currently have staff members in the role. It's MTSS instructional coach. It was requested by the staff for us to be more in alignment and more consistent with other titles, which was more accurately reflect what they actually do, which is coordination of services.
So I have a question. We're also hiring, I think, for all four of these positions today and approving. Is that basically, we're doing it at the same time because we didn't have a meeting in July? Okay.
Yeah, that's also one of the reasons why you want to.
We moved it off. Okay, that's another one. Okay, thank you.
Okay, no further questions. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Devine?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mrs. Z?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Okay, let's return to our regular order here. So now we will move to.
One, one quick, can we get, we got beat up for the last year. We just approved and ratified the contract. Can we just take a moment to celebrate that we've just removed that?
So moving to section 10, the business minister and board secretary report.
All right, I will be brief. Busy summer, as usual. 10.01, I have your June and July monthly budget transfer reports. Item 10.02 are your June and July business administrator, business administrator treasurer reports and board secretary's reports. 10.03 are your June and July student activity cash reports. 10.04 is your June financial statements for Nutriserve. 10.05 is the listing of the purchase orders that have been issued in July and August. And then 10.06, a listing of the bills paid in July, which we will ratify, and then the August bills list that will be paid tomorrow morning pending approval this evening.
Moving to section 11, Buildings, Grounds, and Finance Committee. Mr. Craig, the chairperson, will present.
Thank you. The Finance, Buildings, and Grounds Committee reviews all financial statements, purchase orders, and warrants on a monthly basis. Committee also reviews and approves all contracts with outside service providers and oversees all maintenance and capital improvement projects district-wide. Tonight, we are seeking approval for the following items. 11-2 to 11-9 is the board secretary's report for the last two months of financials, as was just presented. 11-10 is our transfer, transfer approvals for ESSAids and subcosts from last school year that were over the 10% threshold. 11-11 is accepting FY 2026 IDA grant funds. 11-12 is approval to go out for RFP for LDTC services. Pause, we have a winner of that RFP. 11-13 is accepting the outcome of that for for this company to provide those services for students. 11-14, QPA limit revision due to changes in the law. So see, having, updating that to reflect those, the new thresholds. 11-15 is a contract for athletic transportation services for the school year. 11-16 is the 26, 27 budget calendar. 11-17 is the business office SOPs. 11-18 is updating the purchasing manual. 11-19 is the annual submission of waivers for for toilets and buildings requiring those waivers in order to make sure we are in compliance and serving students. 11-20 is application for a room in Tatum to serve dual access, dual academic uses. 11-21 is a Xerox copier lease. 11-22, shared athletic agreement with Woodland for students to play middle school sports here. 11-23 and 11-24 are shared service agreements for maintenance, one with the Borough for cleaning services and another one with Chiselhurst School District for as-needed maintenance that we can provide. 11-25 through 11-37 are various agreements with companies to provide as-needed services throughout the year. Typically, these come over the course of the year, and we are approving them as they are needed. If we can't source them, staff has to kind of get ahead of us. It's been over a couple of years. So this will allow staff now to already have these agreements. If they need them, they can go out and get them and not have to wait on us. But there are a lot of them. 11-38 is the 25, 26 ESE grants and their amounts. Seeking to approve those, approve, accepting those. 11-39 is approving or accepting of the 25, 26 Perkins grant amounts. 11-40 is the 25, 26 Special Olympics grant, which we will host again this year. 11-42, 11-41 and 11-42 are two different settlement agreements that the district has reached with complainants. 11-43 is a New Jersey water infrastructure grant. And then 11-44 is a facilities request that all I see is gold wrestling program, use our wrestling gym. So I am seeking approval tonight for items 11-2 to 11-44.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second? Questions or comments from board members?
Matt, I just had, 11.37 had caught my eye, and you did touch on it, but could you just explain a little bit more? So I was just looking at this particular one when I was reading the attachment. I just wasn't sure what the difference was between that form of consultancy and the child study team. But if you're saying it's, it's, it's a matter of, you know, having, having a bunch of services ready for the staff if they need it, you know?
So in a nutshell, we were trying to source our own LDTC this summer, and Dr. Whitehouse had a hard time. So she came to me, I guess, beginning of July, and I said, well, you're going to exceed my bid limit of $53,000, so we're going to have to RFP it. And a lot of it, too, is we may approve these people. And let's say I'll call Dave Oliveri tomorrow and be like, Dave, I just approved you. Can you source for somebody? A lot of these places won't start sourcing for a person until you approve them. And then when you go to call them, they don't have anybody, right? So a lot of this comes at a child study team as, you know, if, and a lot of, a bulk of these are, besides the few LDTCs, a lot of these are for translation services. We approve a lot of them because a lot of times we call and they just don't have anybody who's available. So this way, it gives child study team a lot of options to get the services done. So that's why we did it.
That's a great explanation. Thank you.
I had one quick question about the use of facilities, 11-44. Sorry, Matt, trying to find you. The, it says the, all I see is gold wrestling academy was using the high school gym from July 31 to November 26. Have they been held back at all by, because we haven't been able to approve this, or?
No, we approved it. I sent it to Mr. Craig and Mr. Chu and members of the committee to just get approval in the meantime, because they didn't get their paperwork in on time. And we didn't want our wrestlers to be penalized. Because they, the, we've had this program here for at least half a dozen years. They just didn't get the paperwork in on time. Yeah.
Because this, because this was somebody that had, we'd been in partnership and been working with in the past, he felt comfortable saying we could get this.
I agree. I just wanted to make sure they weren't impacted by it.
And I think another thing, too, also is, one of the questions we asked was, was their insurance work was in a lot of stuff and kind of, and the answer was yes. And so again, because of that ongoing relationship, you know, I think you're concerned exactly. We didn't want them to be hampered if it wasn't needed.
We had a similar situation in Oakland last week. And just, I would say, we just want to make sure that you speak to them about making sure that their paperwork's due in on time next year. So.
When this group came in, they realized their paperwork was late. So they literally came in with everything and the check the day it came in. And that's when I had emailed. I actually asked for an apology first on behalf of the Buildings and Grounds guys because they just showed up and we weren't prepared for them. So, and then once they said they were sorry to Mr. Longo, then I let the board know. So.
I have, I have a question. And I'm not sure if this is where I'm supposed to place it or not. But I've been, a lot of parents and kids have been asking me about the phone pouches. Would that be under this category?
No. Yeah.
Okay.
So we can, we can, we can take a motion to talk about that.
Okay.
In a minute. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, so, yep. Roll call, please, Ms. Coleman.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Devine?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mrs. Z?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Chu?
Yes. I think this actually probably goes pretty well with the curriculum committee. So why don't we take a motion to discuss the phone pouches policy right now? So do you want to give that motion? So motion to discuss the the phone pouch policy. Say so moved.
Motion, oh, so moved.
Okay, and can I get a second, please?
Second.
Okay, so do you want to ask your question?
I don't feel like I have a lot of knowledge to be able to answer a lot of the parents and children, not just my children, but children in the community that are asking me to be able to answer this question about the phone pouches and the concern from many parents, and I kind of have that concern, too, is, you know, emergency in the school and them being able to contact me or things like that because their phone would be locked away in a pouch that isn't unlocked until the end of the day.
So this is something that I also heard from a family that I know. So basically, just to give people more context, I believe this has to do with the high school testing the yonder pouches and the cell phone policy. So I don't know if Dr. McDowell or Ms. Howell Turner wants to talk a little bit more about the policy and how it's going to work.
Fred, I'm happy to include that as part of my curriculum update here in one second, and you can chime in with anything. Is that okay? So I have a couple of updates, and I just added that as a bullet to the list, if that's okay, Danielle?
Okay.
Okay.
Can we clarify that, is that part of a grant that we're being, that we're using to pay for those yonder patches, pouches?
I actually don't know how to end this. I guess we just move on, or?
Make a motion to egg the motion.
Motion to close discussion.
You guys are making me earn my money tonight trying to keep these minutes.
See, I would just let Meredith do her report and then.
So moved. Okay, and a second? Okay, and so now we move to Section 12 Curriculum Committee. And so, Ms. Sherman, the Chairperson, will present.
Got it, got it, got it. Okay. The Curriculum Committee oversees and approves the district curriculum and assessment programs, as well as field trips, home instruction, co-curricular programs and school calendar. Seeking approval tonight for the following items. We'll start 12.02, a curriculum update from Ms. Howell Turner.
Good evening again, everyone, and I will get to the yonder topic in one moment, but I wanted to just touch on a few things prior to that. First, I see Dr. Jack is still here, and I will say to Windsor and Karen, who maybe are listening at home, and Jack, who's here before me. I think we only had the opportunity to overlap for one year, but I will say that I think it's perhaps a testament to your leadership that even after three decades at this, I was still surprised when you told us you were retiring, which shouldn't be a surprise, right, but I was still surprised. And so I'm grateful that we had the opportunity to overlap for a year and for your wise counsel that I will perhaps continue to lean on going forward, and we wish you a long and happy and healthy retirement, and I expect to see you zipping around Knight Park on your bike for many years to come. We, I will also just add that we have a long agenda tonight that tees up a great year ahead. Staff began setting up classrooms today. Principals are putting finishing touches on their welcome back presentations to their staff. Data is being analyzed, goals are being set, and as Dr. McDowell said a few minutes ago, staff return a week from tomorrow on the 2nd for two days of staff professional development before students return for half-days on September 4th and 5th. If you are a Collingswood parent like me, you are counting down the minutes until that moment. And so we look forward to the start of another great year ahead. And so much of what you see in Section 12 Committee, or Curriculum, and Section 13 is putting all of those pieces in order for a great year ahead. To, to, to touch on the question regarding the yonder pouches, which is a Collingswood High School-only, at this time, only initiative. I'll go back to last summer here in Collingswood. Dan Whalen, one of our high school assistant principals, led an optional book study, leading some book talks around the, getting, gaining some popularity around the book, The Anxious Generation, that folks may have heard of here. And I believe that really kick-started here locally in our, in our district at the high school a real conversation about what is or isn't working in terms of our current school cellphone technology policy for our students. We have had for many years limitations on student access to their devices during the school day. And I can tell you, in many instances, the classroom time, learning time currently, or in the past, has been quite free of cell phones in the, in the way that one would, one would hope, that kids are able to focus and attend in the classroom. And teachers have done an excellent job of managing those, those potential battles. But there's so much research and information coming out that it's hard to ignore that we need to go further as a district to reach the point of a distraction-free campus. And that's the, that's the evolution of where we've been and what's working and where we are heading to ensure that our students can focus during school, our teachers can teach. And I will say, just personally, one of the things that I'm most excited about is the hopeful shift in social interactions between kids. You know, I would say right now, students are allowed to use their phones during passing time, transitions in between classes or during study halls or in the cafeteria. And the building is often really quiet, and not the good kind of quiet. The kind of quiet where kids are staring at their device rather than talking to each other. And so I'm really excited about the work the high school team has put into getting this in order. As you can imagine, it's a ton of preparation, logistics, communication. They formed a task force to implement the protocols. Communication went home over the summer. There was an orientation last week for students and other forthcoming orientations to make sure that staff are well-prepared. We've allocated time on those professional development days next week to ensure that staff are well-equipped with the shift. And included in those communications are, I think, the very reasonable questions you have around like safety and how to communicate with your, with your child during the day and how students can communicate with their families during the day should some kind of unexpected need arise. And we will continue to obviously reflect and tweak as needed going forward to make sure that it's a smooth and efficient implementation.
Is this, this pouch, this yonder pouch, do they carry that throughout the day?
I didn't answer half of the questions. It's around payment and, what was, sorry.
So, so let's, let's hold questions because we have to get through, I think, the agenda items. Open motion to pass, and then we can discuss.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Howell Turner. Items 12.3 and 12.04 are middle school and high school field trips are mostly the MD 63 program trips throughout the year. 12.05, out-of-district placement, these are medical placements. 12.06 is a calendar revision, and this is actually, it's not like a date change. It's the start time for the middle school has been changed, and that's actually kind of nice because now middle schoolers can sit and actually eat breakfast. 12.07, our district, this is an annual approval of curriculum across all levels. So 12.07 is at the high school, and you can see all the curricular projects or all the different curriculums for various core content classes and electives being approved or up for approval. 12.08 is the middle school, 6th, 7th and 8th grade. And then 12.09 is elementary school, including two classrooms with pilot reading programs. They're listed at the end there. Should be really interesting to see how those, how those turn out. 12.10 is the state mandated, and 12.11 are part of the comprehensive equity plan, state mandated multi-year valuations, which is submitted to the county. 12.12 is a state requirement to submit a plan that we will hopefully never, ever have to use, but what to do should schools close for extended period of time. 12.13 is support from the New Jersey Commission for the Blind and Visually Impaired to serve four students within our district. So seeking approval for items 12.02 to 12.13 tonight.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
And a second? And then we'll turn it over to Ms. Brown to ask her questions about the yonder pouches.
Thank you. I guess the question of the funding for the yonder pouches and then the, well, you want to answer that first?
Yes, that is paid out of title grant funding.
Is this pouch carried with the children all day? Is it kept in their locker? How does that work?
I believe that every student receives one pouch. It is their responsibility to maintain with them inside or outside of school if they, if they wish, so it can leave, leave with them. I will triple-check the specifics on that, but I'm pretty certain. And then I believe there is a process if the pouch gets lost or damaged for getting a new pouch in its place. But the device physically, I think to answer the question, their phone stays with them. It's not like it gets taken away during the day. The pouch stays with them. It's like a heavy-duty kind of neoprene sleeve that I've tested out myself.
Yeah, I've actually been to a comedy show where we had to do that, like Kevin Hart, and we had to put our pouches in there. But coming out, they, that's what I was wondering, how do you unlock it? How would they be unlocking it at the end of the day?
Yep, so there is a device that comes with the, the subscription to yonder. There will be multiple unlocking stations throughout the buildings to facilitate a smooth exit so that there's not, as you can imagine, like a logjam of kids trying to all get to one device. So, so that's just like part of the exit protocol is to pass by one of those stations and unlock your yonder pouch.
And then the pouch goes home with them?
Right.
I think the last thing is, if this goes good with the high school this year, is it the plan to move it like to the middle school and then on to elementary schools? Do you have a plan for that?
So historically, so the middle school has implemented a modified cellphone plan several years ago. And so the incidence of students violating the cellphone policy at the middle school is dramatically lower. And so it was not, it wasn't as pervasive. And so we didn't see the need to move it to the middle school level because the existing practices at the middle school were working, and there were minimal disruptions using the phones at the middle school campus. In terms of elementary, we don't see widespread cellphone usage at our elementary schools, and so we don't envision needing to expand beyond this. And this is, we're piloting this.
So the subscription to yonder, is that covered also with the grant, with the pouches?
I don't know if subscription was the right word of me. I was trying to think of the right word to describe what we, what we contracted with them, but it physically pays for the boxes and the locking and unlocking devices.
Sorry, Kate. In the past, I think they've been able to use their phones, like when they were going to check in for the bathroom breaks and things like that. How's that going to work now?
They will, they will not be using their phones during those times of the day, and so the high school team has worked through alternate plans for how to issue passes and things of that nature.
How long is, I'm sorry, Kate. No, you go.
This is actually not, not so much a question and just sort of a broader context comment, which is that, you know, this is going to become something, I think, that will eventually be some top-down policy from the state. New York State just passed a statewide policy for, toward distraction-free schools that New York City has adapted pretty much in, you know, in full. And we know from, from the past that what our neighbors in New York do often kind of comes over to New Jersey and vice versa. So, you know, I think this is going to be the wave of the future in terms of campus-wide attempts to kind of control the distraction that comes with, with devices. So I think we can, we can aim to see this happening in more than just Collingswood, for sure.
So paired with, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, paired with that is the governor made an announcement several months ago that they were seeking school districts to pilot this type of, not necessarily the yonder, but to the distraction-free schools wasn't nearly enough based on the actual need, but they allocated about a million dollars statewide for early adopters. School districts that had already done the work in the previous year and were ready to implement. And so we fully, to Dr. Seltzer's point, we fully expect there to be a draft state expectation that will probably be covered in superintendent roundtables, which start back up in September, and then a plan of implementation statewide.
And then I was just going to add to Fred's last point. The, the high school team has been strategically reaching out to other area districts in South Jersey who have maybe been a year or two ahead, ahead of Collingswood on this journey. And so they've met, met with staff and I believe students, too, from some neighboring school districts just to understand what, what's working, what's not, how, you know, what, what we should be thinking about in terms of our implementation process. And so it's good to have, you know, brainstorming partners in the, in the area to, for, for the high school team and for, for us to be able to bounce ideas off of as well.
If I can throw my hat in the ring real quick, to what Kate was saying. I saw a map over the weekend, and I think there's only like four or five states in America left that does not have mandatory by the state and where one of them, which was kind of surprising. But with that said, just really briefly, how will the morning work? Like, how will the kids come in, put them in the pouches? How are they mandated to do that? How are they checked to do that? What's their punishment if they don't do that? Is there a rigging for the system? And a yes or no question, does the pouch block cellular transactions, right? Like, does it, is it like the foil hat, or is it just, or is it just like, it's in there, you can't see it?
I can say when I used it, it still rang. They want you to turn it off, but my phone would still buzz. I didn't turn it off, obviously. But it's still, it's still, I could still feel a vibrate on, you know, in the pouch.
So Danielle, are you saying this is a plan for you?
You asked a lot of questions. I think I can, can you repeat some of them or in the order that you want me to?
The only thing I'm wondering is what the, what the procedure is for walking into school in the mornings. That's the main thing I want to answer on.
Same, they're just the reverse of what I described in terms of the exits. So like stations set up strategically, and I believe this is the main, main and only point of access in the morning for students and other than those who are late. And so that will just funnel through here as, as usual with the locking devices on the way in.
Jimmy, that was a great question of can they rig it, like can they?
I will not speak that into existence. I don't know. Where there's a will, there's a way. I don't know.
Your other great question that I want to follow up on is, is there some sort of, what's the protocol? If they don't want to do it or they refuse or, you know, things like that?
Yeah, good, good question. We imagine that this is new and different for students, and so that's why the communication to kids and families started over the summer to help to, you know, shift, shift the mindsets coming into the school year. And we'll, we will lean on our restorative code of conduct as we would with other non-compliance across the building. So it's not like a separate or different reaction. We will handle it as would other disciplinary nature.
I think it's great that they're bringing the anxious generation into the conversation and talking about it with the kids and the staff. I mean, if any of you haven't read the book, I have it. If you want it, it's phenomenal.
You said pilot. Does that mean one year, or we're not sure? In terms of the, the length of the pilot?
So the policy, there's been a no-cellphone policy in the district for many, many years. And so the district has, schools have interpreted said policy. Kids bedtime, sorry.
You need a yonder box, sir.
I'm an adult. And so at the end of the day, phones are not permitted in, in class, and they're not supposed to be seen in school. And so when we say pilot, we mean pilot the current strategy that they're trying to employ.
That's, that's what I meant. Anyway, how long is the grant for?
Oh, well, we're using title. I mean, we, we get, we get title every year. And so the, every single year, they have to update the, the grant based on the needs of the school. And so I would envision that we, as long as necessary.
And my other thing, and believe me, Danielle, I appreciate concerns of parents. I like just being able to coordinate with, with my son when he comes here and, you know, pick up your little sister and all the things. Believe me, I do get that, but I also think that for parents who are nervous, we, we, there are lots of parents who maybe don't remember back in the day where if you had an issue, you called the kid's school. And there are people who work at the school who will find your kid. It's, you know, it's, it's. It's it's, you know, it's it's liable, right? We need to know where all the children are. But understandably, in this day and age, and I'm I'm, I am guilty of that myself, that we're so used to being able to instantly get in touch with our kids. But I think maybe some messaging to parents who are concerned about that, reminding them, sending out phone numbers. If there is a problem, these are the people who are in the office who you can call direct phone numbers. I think that would that would add a layer of of, you know, comfort to to any kind of anxiety about that.
Paired with what Megan just said is that, just so, just for public record, there are phones in every single classroom in in our district. There was life before phones. There will be life after phones. And I think at the end of the day, the emphasis on distraction free, we did focus groups with students last year when they implemented the current plan that they're seeking, that they're evolving. And the number one thing that students of all ages, all academic backgrounds and demographics said was that they saw and appreciated a dramatic increase in engagement in classes. And that it also significantly decreased the amount of social media drama that had been contributing to some of the conflict among some students on campus. And that they wanted us to crank up with fidelity, making sure that phones were not part of the the school day.
So I, we are, there's already a policy in the middle school, seems to work really well. I love that I actually can't get a hold of my kid because she keeps it in her locker. Why not implement that at the high school? And then it sounds, we spent a lot of money. And it also sounds like it's, could be a complicated process. Kids lose it, there's going to be issues. It's not going to be streamlined across the entire district. So I guess my thing, why not just implement what we have in the middle school?
They tried. They 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 did exact, so the middle school, I would say, Dr. Jack, is maybe four years now, five years? Give or take? So maybe six or seven years. For the last two years, the high school has tried to implement what the middle school has figured out. And we were not seeing the types of progress and the types of outcomes that we experienced in middle school. And so we needed to evolve.
No disciplinary action was successful, no taking away phones. I mean, it seems like there should be a rule, the students, you know, sign that code of conduct. And if they break the conduct, they have to.
I I understand, but when you have 800 young people, one of the other pieces that contributes to a distraction is putting our teachers front and center with conflict every 51 minutes about cellphones. And so for the sake of the order, for the sake of consistency and implementation, the elimination of some of the variability was necessary.
I think also, one thing that is interesting is that, like, this is true of a number of high schools. Very few high school students don't use their locker anymore. Like, they don't have a communal space that they put, or a common space that they put there. Like, in middle school where it's encouraged, like, use your locker. High school students don't use lockers. They just carry their stuff with them the entire time. So and it's, it, so like, you can't, like, that would be the only thing they put in their locker and they're not going to put it in there, like the middle school program has. It's so weird that, like, no high school kids use their locker anymore.
Do you know any, like, of the other states that are having these restrictions in place? Like, do they pay for this stuff for the districts? Or can we anticipate New Jersey taking this on as an expense? And we don't have to take that on?
It's really hard to determine. With the gubernatorial race coming up, it's very hard to determine what's going to happen coming from Trenton.
I'd also just like to say that I think this is a worthy investment for us. Removing distractions so our teachers can focus on engaging kids and not have the battle of phone in the short amount of time that they that they have in front of kids is huge. And I think we saw what was happening with the uptick in violence and fights that were happening that were coordinated on cellphones. We saw people rushing with their cellphones to videotape these things, which was drawing more people to come in. I think if we're not investing in this, what, where are we? And I I, so I I understand we want to be fiscally responsible. I understand we just put a big tax burden on the town. But these are the types of things that we need to feel comfortable as a board saying, this is where we want to invest our money in keeping our kids focused and safe.
I'll I'll add that this definitely is going to be like a culture change for the, you know, the the high school, the students, and and clearly the families, right? And at least personally, from from my perspective, you know, I I am someone who is diagnosed and is currently treated for ADHD. And sometimes you just need someone to to force your hand in terms of distractions. Like, and it's it's really, it's like, you can try as hard as you want to not be distracted by something. But unless someone makes you, right, it it's very difficult. And so I would, I'm hoping that in many ways, you know, this is a way for some students who maybe have similar, you know, challenges that I do at times. This can help them with with their studies and with their focus during their school day. And again, I think that the social interaction piece, I think, is really important. Because again, that's, I think, not not to be like, you know, get off my lawn, I, you know, like, you know, the type of like, like, you know, whatever. But like, you know, it clearly, social interaction is a very important piece as we learned during the pandemic. And so that piece, you know, face to face, I think, will be helpful.
I'll just maybe close this portion by saying that Woodbury was one of the districts that implemented a distraction free school, I believe, high school, I believe, two years ago at this point. And I'm gonna misquote the student here, but you'll get the just, basically, the student was quoted in an article and said, well, if we have to be at school and we can't be on our devices, we might as well do our work. And the superintendent of Woodbury cited some astronomical increase in the number of students on the principal's list, on the honor roll, et cetera. And so I anticipate that we can look forward to similar positive ripple effects here.
I have a curriculum question for the middle school. Did I, did I miss choir in there?
I am looking now, and if it's not included, that was most certainly an oversight because Mr. Oliveri, the middle school principal, is in front of me. And I can tell you that Mr. Hartong's choir classes are very full. And so we will amend that, amend that oversight in good catch by those those eyeballs here.
I gotta give Meg the credit for that one.
Whoever, whoever noticed that.
Can you, can we have this online by any chance?
This?
I'm sorry, like, the the course offerings? I mean, as a middle school parent that my kid doesn't communicate with me, I did go on to their curriculum and I and I saw that choir wasn't on here and it's all my kid's schedule, you know? So this is, it just sparked things. I go on, but I didn't see any class offerings. I know it's, you know, slim, you know, from for sixth, seventh, but it would still kind of be nice to have that under the curriculum page if it's something that could be uploaded in the beginning of the year or whenever it's finalized. I think, I don't, I know some middle school parents would appreciate just seeing what's there. So if that's something that.
Sure, that's no problem.
Should we do a motion to amend that that agenda item? Yeah, so let's have a motion to amend Agenda Item 12.08, which is the district curriculum for middle school to include choir for all three grades? For all all three grades, for, so choir under grade six, grade seven, and grade eight. Can I get a motion? And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members? Okay, so then we'll take, sorry. Okay, we'll we'll take a roll call vote on the sub motion. So just the motion to add choir. It looks like none of the music programs are actually on on here. High school ones, so sorry, but for but for mills, for middle school.
Does middle school have band too, actually, that they don't have band either?
None of the music.
Okay.
If you, I was gonna say, if you give me 30 seconds, I can reference what may have been inadvertently left off here. Give me, I don't know if I can have 30 seconds.
Can we just do a blanket approval to add whatever courses are missing from here rather than trying to figure out which ones?
It's the visual and performing arts, right? Shoot, I don't have my my Robert Fools book with me today. Let's.
I have to take a roll call on amending the motion.
Okay, so let's amend this motion? So let's amend this.
You already took.
We already took the motion to change 12.08. So I need to, so I'm just gonna read adding, I'm gonna, motion to amend 12.08 to include all the missing visual performing arts.
Well, so the.
And I need to roll call the change to the agenda.
So we have a motion right now being considered to amend it to include only choir. So do we pass that first and then do a second motion to do the visual and performing arts section? The one day I didn't bring my Robert Fools book.
Right? I I think we can just go with the latter. I think I can just cross choir.
Okay.
And just change it to visual performing. So it's corrected reflectly.
Okay.
Correctly reflected in the minutes.
So, all right, so let's 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 back up a little bit and let's have the motion for adding the visual and performing arts section.
Yes.
To Agenda Item 12.08, which is middle school. So let's let's have the motion beyond that. So can we have a motion for that?
So moved.
And a second? Okay, so this is a motion to add the entire visual and performance arts section to the middle school curriculum, which I believe was inadvertently cut out when it was added to the agenda. Can we have any questions or comments from board members? Okay, a roll call, please, Ms. Coleman.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Devine?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mrs. Z?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yep.
Mr. Chil.
Yes. Okay, any further questions or comments from board members? Okay, so this is a roll call vote on the main motion, which is to pass all of these curriculum committee items. Ms. Coleman?
All right, we got Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Devine?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mrs. Z?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Chil?
Yes. Moving on to Section 13 Personnel Committee, Dr. Seltzer, Chairperson, will present.
The Personnel Committee reviews all recommendations for teaching and staff employment, considers co-curricular employment, and considers all professional development opportunities for staff members. Because this agenda covers two months and particularly a very busy period of the school year regarding personnel, buckle up, we got a long one. So 13.03 to 13.04 are the retirements that we had some kind words about earlier. So Dr. McMillan, since you're still here, we wholeheartedly say thank you for your service. 13.05 to 13.11 are a variety of resignations. 13.12 to 13.14 are revised or rescinded contracts. 13.15 to 16 are leaves, FMLA, NJ FMLA. 13.17 to 13.19 are voluntary transfers. So those are transfers from within district, right, from one school to another school, volunteered by teachers within the district. 13.20 to 13.54 are lots and lots of new folks, but also some not new folks in new positions, including Mr. Oliveri, congratulations, 13.21 interim middle school principal. Congratulations. So we welcome all of those people, wish them a wonderful year here in Collingswood. 13.55 to 13.59 are approval of stipends. Those are district stipends, athletic and nonathletic stipends. 13.60 is the approval of after-school clubs. Let me make sure I'm keeping up here. Sorry. Okay, 13.61 is the approval of athletic event staff. 13.62 to 64 are the approval of a tutoring coordinator, a family liaison at Sharp School, and interpreting service is for Spanish-speaking families. 13.65 to 67 are the approval of interns, psychology and social work interns. 13.68 is the approval for a staff member to present a virtual session as part of a PLC day on NWEA and MAP. 13.69 to 13.77 are the approval of of various kinds of summer work. 13.78 to 13.79 are the placement of student teachers. 13.80 is the approval of substitutes and tutors. 13.81 is the travel expense form. We have a few folks in the district going to conferences and trainings. And 13.02 and 13.03 are the approval of Ms. Hal Turner and Ms. Coleman's contracts for the 25 to 26 school year. So I am seeking approval of Items 13.02 to 13.83 tonight.
Is there a motion? And a second? Okay, so I'm gonna jump right in here because I I emailed the, to inform the board earlier today that that we actually need to do a couple of secondary motions here to amend a couple of items. So we're going to do two different motions here. They are to amend the items so that they are, we're hiring acting people in those positions. And this will allow us to properly post their positions for 10 days. And then and then we can permanently appoint them in in September. And so the first motion that I'm seeking is a motion to amend Agenda Item 13.39 to be for an acting literacy coach part-time, not, so so that changes by adding acting before the position literacy coach. Can I get a motion to amend Agenda Item 13.39?
So moved.
And a second? Questions and comments from board members?
Not because this person was in the district last year? And is that, I mean, I read the email, but I just want to make sure that I am, that's the reason. They were here, they resigned, and but they.
So the the specific position, I don't know how much I can speak about the specific person in the position. But essentially, the the reason why we're adding acting is to give us time to post the position, the the actual permanent position for 10 days before we approve the permanent position. So this is kind of a stopgap measure to make sure that we have someone in that spot right now for the school this, for the school year to start, while we're also then posting that position for 10 days before we approve, like, the permanent position in September.
Was this not done originally just because of a time constraint?
Yeah.
Okay.
And similar for the next one, too. Okay, so a roll call, please, on this secondary motion.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Devine?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mrs. Z? Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Chil?
Yes. And then, so now another secondary motion, so a motion to amend Agenda Item 13.56. And specifically, because that is an agenda item with several stipends, but specifically for the stipend for STEM department coordinator to be acting STEM department coordinator. Can I get a motion, please? And a second? Questions or comments from board members? Okay, a roll call, please, and Ms. Coleman on this secondary motion.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Devine? That was loud.
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mrs. Z?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Chil?
Yes. Okay, so now we're back to the main motion, which is all of the Personnel Committee items. Are there any questions or comments from board members about the regular Personnel Committee agenda items?
I wanted to ask, well, just, I guess, make a statement about Item 13.21, this new position. I realized that we we did approve the job description, but all the job descriptions were together. So I didn't, I didn't feel that we could talk about it individually. But I just have concerns. I realized that we had some resignation, some 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 retirements. And I appreciate that there is work to be done. But I think considering the situation we're in, and Ms. Coleman, you did a fabulous presentation, and I appreciate, and I understand a lot more about, you know, the the tax presentation. But, you know, according to the data, we're doing well, but I think we can do even even better. We asked the community for a pretty significant tax hike, including senior citizens. And I think hiring another non-student facing position is is not maybe the best idea right now. So I did want to say that. And I also had a question about the job description for this particular position. It did mention something about the. It did mention something about the, and was a stipend, the merger of the secondary campus, and I just wondered if you could explain a little bit about what exactly that means going forward.
So at the end of the day, I think that two things can be true. And so when we look at the, the data as it relates with our investments, Collingswood School District has the, some of the lowest administrative costs, not just in the 74 comparable districts, but across the state of New Jersey. And in terms of net for net, we're actually decreasing overall administrative expenditures this year, unfortunately due to the retirement of some of our veteran administrators. And so we will see a net decrease in administrative costs. In terms of net positions, we dissolved one administrative role and created a more all-encompassing role. And in terms of cost, the actual cost is less for a more comprehensive position. And so we're seeing an overall decrease in administrative costs. We're not increasing the net number of administrative positions because we will still actually be light one administrative position, given actions that this board is taking this evening as we're seeking to grow our own, develop one of our classroom leaders into a future administrative leader, with a goal of actually filling that spot in the middle of the year once they've completed the certification process. And so we're actually starting the year with one administrator less than what we had last year, even with this transition. The community has been asking for multiple years, I would say decades, that we need to, we're making academic progress year over year. Our teachers are working incredibly hard. However, we are not making the same strides as it relates with subgroup populations. We're not seeing the increases amongst our children of color. We're not seeing the increases in terms of our students with IEPs, and we're not seeing the same degree of, of improvement and progress with students with multilingual challenges. And so we need additional support and leadership and data in order to help us make better decisions so that our teachers aren't having to do the heavy lifting in terms of the data analysis, in terms of seeking and trying to find the data. We have to have, we're replacing some of our existing systems to be more efficient and more nimble so that we can get better supports and more timely supports to students. You also heard about the MTSS coordinators, and so when we talk about targeted intervention, we're talking about making sure that every single child in our district gets what they need, and we need leadership in order to help us to be able to actually do that, while also coaching leaders, while also supporting teachers, while also bringing us the timely information. And so this role is not only needed, but we believe that we have a mandate based on what the community has been asking for us to do, which is to, to more aggressively influence student achievement, specifically among our diverse populations.
And could you speak to the, the merger of the secondary campuses, please?
So we'll be announcing with staff next week. We won't get into that this evening because we wanna make sure that we've had the opportunity to talk with staff first. But paired with conversations that we had last year during the tax levy incentive aid, we talked about what would the implications of not approving or receiving the additional funding, what that would be, and conversations around consolidation of elementary schools, merger between the middle and the high school, loss of co-curriculars and pay-to-play, all of those core pieces as part of this. And so what we believe is that in an effort to acknowledge the fiscal challenges that we have had in our district for many, many years, while we're seeking to not decrease degrees of service and support to our students, we need a more streamlined approach. The campus is already physically connected. There are artificial barriers with having the separation that we need to address, and so we're gonna be working with our community, with our staff, to help design what comes next. And so staff will hear about this next week. Staff will be invited to actively participate and represent their collective campuses, and then shortly after, we'll be sending out communication to families, letting them know how families and community members can actively participate in the process with an overarching timeline. And so we'll be releasing all of that next week.
So I just wanna point out that I'm obviously very sad about the three admin that are retiring, but there are nine total retirements or resignations on the agenda that I've counted, and that's significant. We need to figure out a way to retain the people that we have. I understand that we're doing a lot to incentivize new people to come on, but we, there's a reason why these people have stayed here for so long. So I want us to focus on retention as much as possible this year. I also have the same concerns about Megan, that Megan had in terms of, you know, the, the cost of things. I do understand everything that you said, but right now, given that just, it feels like yesterday we were talking about a nuclear option in the district, and I know that there's an upcoming bill going on in New Jersey right now that, that is adjusting the funding formula, but it doesn't change the structure of it. It changes some things that makes it a more streamlined process, but we're still potentially facing a lot of heartache and hard decisions in the coming months. So I have concerns about what we're spending right now and how that looks to the community, just putting that out there.
I just wanna echo something that, that Matt said earlier in the meeting, which is the importance of investment. And I think, you know, we as a board will have, I think, the, the kinds of difficult decisions ahead, right? I mean, this is not a problem that is going away, right? The, the financial burden that is on districts increases every year. And so that's why I think it's even more important to be strategic about where we're making investments. And leadership is incredibly important for the direction and overall health of a district. You know, take the example of, of this campus merger, which I know we're not going into tonight, but to have that done very, very well is super important for the health not only of, of our districts, but of the individual students across those two campuses, right? So an investment in doing these kinds of shifts and, and leadership well is, I think, money well spent.
I'm not opposed to the investment, per se. I'm just, you know, the optics of it doesn't look great to the community, and I think that, you know, we just need to be careful of how fast we're spending the money and, and long, and I know we need to invest, but at the same time, we also need to be mindful of where that's gonna put us in three or four months when we're talking about the budget again.
Right. And I think what Dr. McDowell said about lowering the overall administrative cost is a good stat to say to people who ask that question.
I'd also like, like to jump in here and say that I, I don't think it's a very good look to the community for us to be the only district that doesn't have a leader in looking at data and performance metrics. I mean, if you look at any high-performing district anywhere these days, they all have high-level leadership focused upon data and performance metrics, because that's so important for helping to support teachers to drive student performance. And so if we're expecting our teachers to, to use data to improve their instruction, to improve the outcomes of our kids, then we need to listen to our teachers who've said they need support. And this is an integral part of providing a, a support for teachers who are being asked to use data in a data-driven world to accelerate the growth of students. You know, and, and one of those things, which is, I think, Ms. McCulsky brought this up, you know, yes, of course, I think we can always be better in terms of, of trying to be as efficient as possible. And this is something that I think was brought up several years ago by Dr. McDowell, that, that we have to be more efficient. And I'm, I'm glad now that, as a district, as a community, we are open and eager to have discussion about efficiency, not as a bad thing, but as a, a way for us to be able to do more for our kids, given the rising costs of, of, of education, right? Of course, you have to be more efficient, but we also need to make sure that we have the supports in place for our staff so that our students can learn, so our staff can, can, can grow their, their skills. And I, I do think that this is a worthwhile investment, especially considering the fact that overall our mischief costs are decreasing now. One of the, I think, unfortunate parts about our school budget challenges is that it is not, frankly, in some ways, it's, it's not because of these actions that, that we're gonna be in a school, in a budget crunch, right? It's not because of that, last year's not gonna be because of, of that this year. It's because of structural challenges to school funding, right? We're normally locked to 2% increase in our tax levy, which is less than 1% of our school budget, right? So every single year, we can raise around $375,000 additional dollars in terms of our budget. But we know inflation just large, you know, is like 3.5% right now, right? We, we know that, 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 that costs are rising faster than that. And, and that's one of those things where that is the bigger picture that we're definitely gonna have to look at. The other thing I, I wanna mention, because Ms. Maya brought this up, is, is, yeah, so I didn't do the counting, but yes, there's, so there are about nine, I think, we said, resignations. You know, one thing I wanna highlight is we have, from my count, 28 new faces to the district being up for approval during this agenda item. I think one of the challenges that we have to have as a board is both appreciate and honor and respect the, the long history and culture, right, of, of the district here, and, and the hard work that has come before, right? For example, again, we're gonna embarrass Dr. McMillan here, right, of how much work that the folks who have been here have put into building this district, right? But our goal cannot be that nothing ever changes in this district. Because if that's the case, then we can expect nothing ever to be better for the next students and the next students and next students. And what, I've never spoken to a parent who has said, "I don't want better for my kid." So our goal cannot be that we never change. Our goal should be that we continue to improve. And I think we have to do that even in the face of these really difficult, you know, inflationary pressures and, and budget season. And I think that's a huge challenge, and, and, you know, I'm appreciative of all the work that the folks on the board and the administration and schools are doing to help us meet this challenge.
I, I just wanna make sure I'm really clear. We've spent time discussing two investments and making sure that our teachers can focus on teaching, right? We had a lot of teachers and staff come up to the mic, push too far to crunch data and have to do more and more and more. We have to invest in letting them teach. We have to invest in not making them phone police. Really, that is a critical dependency. I 100% agree, and that's part of why we have goals around retention and growth and investing. That has to happen, but I'm really excited we're investing in, like, letting teachers teach and not do the stuff they've just had more and more to take on. We just have to create the space for teaching to happen and growth, right? Like, that will happen. I do expect us to hold the bar high around, is this balanced in our budget? Can we afford this? Answer at this point is yes, and we hope it stays that way. But we're investing in cre, in meeting the expectations that were laid before us month after month. We cannot expect you to do more and more, and that we have to respond with, we aren't, right? Like, so I, I, I think these are a mechanism for us to hear that and think innovatively about how to get there without just blowing through money, because I don't read these as that. I do wanna make sure I'm understanding that, but I, I'm hearing that we, it was really with intention and a reduction of expense that we're trying to move forward.
I, I really appreciate you saying that, that idea of just letting teachers teach, because since the pandemic, any teacher will tell you that more and more has been piled on their plate, particularly when it comes to data and all of the learning loss that many, many districts have faced after the pandemic. This position, it, like Roger said, is pretty common in most competitive districts. And so I think while it might not be student-facing, it is an investment in our students in the long run. It sucks to have to pay, you know, to say like, "Oh, yeah, we're spending money on another administrator," but that is a crucial, it's, works hand-in-hand with the Director of Curriculum and Instruction. Like, you have to have a testing coordinator, data specialist alongside your curriculum coordinator. That's just how every competitive, successful district works, period.
And I would wanna jump in and just make sure we're clear. This is not another administrator in that sense. This is replacing a retiring administrator. Any other questions or comments from board members?
Yeah, so for 13.82 and 13.83, is there an increase in that contract from last year for both of those contracts?
So I'm, I'm assuming those are the, the Assistant Superintendent and the Assistant Curriculum Instruction?
Yes.
Yep, there are.
Do we have a percentage?
Yeah.
We've got the same percentages as the PSA got.
The, it's 3.5, correct?
Yes.
3.5.
I had a question, kind of, kind of similar to what we were just talking about, just in terms of investment. And believe me, I, I am all about investing in student success, but I also think a lot of that investment has to be first and foremost in student-facing positions. I see, and, and I wasn't sure, and obviously, we can't divulge any kind of personnel information, but I do see, you know, we had nine resignations. I am also seeing nine long-term substitutes. So I was wondering how many of those substitutes are due to the fact that we haven't been able to find a full-time staff for some of those resignations? What does that look like just in terms of filling those student-facing positions? You know, and I don't know if, if anybody can speak to that, because that's a concern as well. I also heard, and I don't, I don't know if it's, if, I just wanted to clarify that, you know, due to the loss of, of our, our very longstanding high school science teacher, that certain AP classes are gonna be online due to the fact not being able to replace that position. So, you know, that all, I think, goes in hand with concerns about rigor, academic success, offerings for students, especially students who are, you know, according to the data, struggling. So, you know, I think, I think that's part of the conversation as well, and I was wondering if, if anybody could answer to that.
At a high level, I, I will, I won't get into the details, but all of the long-term subs are based on either medical or maternity leaves. And so the reason why they're long-term subs is because we actually have staff members that's their position, and so it's a long-term sub that's filling in while they are not on campus.
And, and I appreciate that that's a concern, and, and it didn't specify, so that's what I was wondering about that. Thank you.
Okay, I believe that's it for questions and comments. A roll call, please, Ms. Coleman.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Devine?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes, except for 13.21, where I vote no.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mrs. Z?
Yes, except for 13.21, which I vote no.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes, except for where I'm required to abstain.
Mr. Chiu?
Yes. Moving to Section 14 Culture, Climate, and Policy Committee, Ms. Maya, Chairperson, will present.
There are the policies that were listed there earlier. They're not here. Okay, so the Policy and Regulations Committee reviews all updates and changes of district policies and regulations. There were a few on there, but I don't see them right there listed. I do know that there was one change to, I think, Policy 1570. There was one addition that was recommended by Ms. Coleman that was something to vet third-party service providers for data security, which is something that is already part of our practice anyway, but I think everything else was pretty standard. I tried to pull it up on the computer, but I couldn't.
Yeah, so it.
Are you referring to 5111 and all those, the old ones?
No.
So, I guess, let's have a, let's have a motion to pass 14.02, and then, and then we'll, we'll, we'll address that. So a motion to pass 14.02, first reading? And a second? Okay, so I'm looking online. Essentially, what happened was all that content is only administrative content, and so what, so it is on, online, but it's, it's not in the public? Yeah, it should've been in public comment. And so the, the policies are 0.0, oh, sorry, 0173 Duties of Public School Accountant Revised, 0174 Legal Services Revised, 0177 Professional Services Revised, 1570 Internal Controls Revised, and 1620 Administrative Employment Contracts Revised. And those are, those are revisions that are either mandated or recommended by our policy organization that does the school board policies, Strauss S. May, I think they're called. And then, and then there's one bit in the, I forgot, was it, is it Internal Controls piece? That, that, that Ms. Maya mentioned, which is an addition, basically, that Ms. Coleman
piece that Ms. Maya mentioned, which is an addition, basically, that Ms. Coleman added from our insurance provider about just the cybersecurity controls and just vetting processes for our cybersecurity pieces.
Just so you know, Dr. McDowell just moved that, moved it up, so it should be in view of the public now.
So it's all there in the public, so folks should be able to see that all in the public. Do we need to have, like, a secondary motion to amend that item?
Yeah, that was your idea.
Yeah, okay. So...
So I guess we're just going to make a motion to approve 14.02?
Yeah, which is what we're in right now already. So anyways, questions or comments from board members? Okay. And again, this is, this is, should be publicly viewable now. This was locked in administrative content accidentally. So roll call, please, Ms. Coleman.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Devine?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mrs. Z? Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Chu?
Yes. We've already done Section 15, so we're going to move to Section 16, which is the second section for public participation. This section of public participation is for general, more general comments, so this can be about anything, doesn't have to be about items on the agenda, seeing as I don't think there are anyone new here tonight. I'm not going to say this, you know, blurb again, but reminder to please state your name and address, and the time limit is three minutes. The floor is open.
Hi, Cara Boiler, 90th Summerfield Avenue, Collingwood, New Jersey. I just had a quick question. It might be maybe something Ms. Hal Turner can answer, and if you can't, then I'll just address it with the administrator, but since we were talking about it, I thought it might be, you might be able to answer publicly. For the yonder pouches, there was, I've been also kind of fielding some parent questions, and a lot of the, our parent access to our students, which was kind of addressed for emergencies, has a really nice workaround, but there's some, like, when we drop off, if a student forgot their lunch, or forgot money, or forgot, gym uniforms aren't the case anymore, they're not needed. But there's a lot of reasons why we might, a student might reach out to us and say, "Mom, I left this at home." And, you know, maybe they can email or something, but then when a parent goes to drop it off, we kind of ring the bell, and they say, "Please leave it in the cubby in the vestibule. Text your student, let them know it's there, and they'll come get it." So I didn't know if you could address that. If you can't, I can certainly send out a message to Mr. Newman, and hopefully he can kind of relay that information to parents as well. Thank you.
David Oliveri, incoming CPSA president. Just a couple of things to say. First off, thanks to Dr. McDowell, Ms. Coleman, and Ms. Hal Turner for the opportunity to be the interim principal this year of the middle school. I'm really looking forward to it. And also a big thank you to three people that are retiring tonight. I know Mr. Yamamoto and Dr. Principato aren't here, but they helped me tremendously. I learned a lot from them, and of course, the legendary Dr. Jack could never have done it without him, so thank you.
Happy 2025-2026 school year. My name is Mr. Goldberg, music teacher at the Tatum and Garfield Elementary Schools. I am here today speaking on behalf of the district music teachers, Ms. Carlson, Mr. Gross, Mr. Hartung, Ms. Intricasso, Ms. Ludwig, and myself. It is the mission of Collingwood Public School District's Music Department to provide every Collingwood student the opportunity to grow through a high-quality, ability-appropriate, universally-accessible music education that inspires the continuing study of music. Music stayed alive this past summer through the continued efforts of your friendly neighborhood music team. Right down the hall in the middle school auditorium, Collingwood Youth Theater gave us a jolly holiday, performing Mary Poppins Jr. Hats off to music teacher, Mr. Brian Gross, for his supercalifragilistic musical direction. Bravo to Sanatonics co-director and youth theater director, Ms. Marian Doherty, for transforming our mob of over 60 squirmy kids into a cohesive production of precision and order. Getting everyone to step in time was an amazing feat from our returning expert, choreographer, and Collingwood alumni, Ms. Erin Daly. And a big thank you to all the parents and community volunteers working behind the scenes to ensure our students looked and sounded as sweet as a spoonful of sugar. A few blocks down, a handful of our students could be found at the Ritz Theater Summer Arts Camp, macabre production of Sweeney Todd, Demon Barbara Fleet Street, under the music direction of Collingwood's very own Mr. CJ Hartung. For now, I'll spare you from more of my goofy musical puns. I have been told I have the worst puns in London. Finally, Ms. Liz Carlson, secondary orchestra teacher, ran a novel strings program that we all hope will become a staple of our town's summer offerings. Both beginner lesson students and the advanced summer strings orchestra held their culminating performance on July 30th. Kudos to all those involved. We are fortunate here in Collingwood to have music teachers who continue teaching music well after the regular school day. When it, whether it be the aforementioned summer arts programs or after-school activities during the year, such as magical, sanatonics, the spring musical, and more, this community enjoys a variety of opportunities that many districts simply don't have. I can tell you firsthand from districts that send kids home at dismissal, then lock the doors behind them, kids find far less constructive outlets to spend their time. The arts provide a safe place, a place for continued enrichment, a place to belong. The music team looks forward to another year working with this board and administration to make Collingwood a place where students and community members want to be. Thank you.
Seeing as there are no more public comments, do you want to address, so you're on the couch?
I will also attempt to respond only with Mary Poppins references. Just kidding. Ms. Boiler's question regarding family communication during the school day, I won't get into a ton of specifics other than to say that, sort of, the resounding theme tonight is just more communication to families at the high school about the shifts and how you can go about safely communicating as needed throughout the school day with your, with your children. So I have a note to follow up on that.
Okay, with that, for those of you who are at home, you might not know, but I think for cost-saving measures, the AC in this cafeteria has turned off for, I think, the last hour, so it is quite warm, so I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second, please. All in favor? Thank you. Have a good start to the school year.